February first.
Are we on? On, bud. It's February. Day two of budget. Danny, would you call this meeting to order?
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Raby.
Here.
Steve Combs.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve this morning's agenda?
Make a motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raby.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Very good. Well, we welcome. Facilities Director. What is your title anyway?
I think it's uh, Facilities and Maintenance Director and Toilet Fun Fighter.
That's just in parentheses at the bottom?
Yes.
Alright, or doing business ads?
Yes, or doing business ads.
Got it, got it, very good. Well, Chris, welcome this morning to Budget Time, talk through your budget. Maybe as a way to kick this off, if you could just give us some of the highlights.
Sure.
What you're thinking about for salaries, um, projects, expenses, major things we've got to be thinking about for the next year. That are contained within your documents.
Perfect.
Take it away.
Well, I appreciate it, board. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to come in this morning. As you can see, I really didn't change a whole lot in our budget. I think we're a point nine five percent increase over last year. So one thing that we're really in a good position with, with ARPA funds, is it enabled me to actually lower some of my item lines. Try to keep that budget from a massive expenditure, especially considering we have a fairly large increase in building materials. If you're all aware or unaware of that.
Fairly large.
Everything from Romex to copper piping, uh, even Romex staples. I mean, you name it, it's gone up in price and, and not in a small amount. You know, we just went yesterday, uh, Steve actually stopped upstairs and, and saw what we were doing above third floor. Uh, we started the HVAC upgrade at courthouse and we need to put some lumber down. I think it was a total of five two by sixes and two two by twelves. And we were pushing almost five hundred dollars, and that's one sheet O S B as well. So expenses have gone up dramatically, and that's kind of been the challenge this year is forecasting what that market is going to do. Because we deal in everything, if it was just lumber, it would be fairly simple to say, uh, lumber costs are going to be maybe fixed at this four thousand. Four feet and maybe give it a ten or fifteen percent swing either way. But we literally deal in every aspect of the trades. Clear down to, you know, metal for welding projects. You name it, we deal with it, and it was a challenge this year to think about. We were able to cut some line items out. I mean, obviously, uh, one of the, one of the line items that is absolutely not in there this year was the vehicle from last year. We had to update a vehicle for the cleaning staff. That twenty thousand helped coming out of the budget this year, so, uh, that was probably our biggest single cut. But there's some other things I consolidated, you know, as far as projects going forward. We're, we're biting off a huge chunk of that with the ARPA funds right now, because we think about that one point eight five million dollars. That was money we were going to spend inevitably. L E C, for example, you're all aware, um, especially talking last year, we were down to one condenser physically working at that building. So that was something we had to bite off this year one way or another. It was either gonna have to be put in my budget. Thank goodness it didn't have to be, because that turns out to be about a six hundred thousand dollar expense to get that system upgraded. Courthouse, the last major HVAC upgrade we're currently doing. So if you think about when we were closed, we replaced seventy nine heat pumps. So those are all brand new, including the, the electric and the plumbing running to them. Uh, we've updated and, and kind of cleaned up some of the plumbing around the boiler system. That was either redundant or didn't make any sense from the past. So that's taken care of. I know ARPA funds, we even upgraded the water fountains. That's been a big, uh, push for a lot of folks. Not only for convenience, uh, but filling water bottles seems to be a normal thing today. We have all water bottle filling water fountains that aren't completely finished yet. You can use them, but we need to finish the trim around them. But at the end of the day, we've been able to do some things like that. Courthouse expenditures, you know, that, that building at its age is always gonna cost money. We know that, the board is well aware of that. I don't see anything right now that has to be a, a pressing item for the next three to four years.
Can I stop you right there, Chris? So within, I'm, I think incredible that you're able to come in with almost no increase to your overall budget. For a department that certainly spends money.
Yes.
And spends money on the things that we, this is upkeep and things break and things get old and things need to be replaced and repaired and, and that. So that right there is amazing to me. From a major project standpoint, want to make sure I understand. ARPA, some of the things we did with courthouse remodel, are you saying there's nothing we need to really think about through the next budget year from a major project perspective?
No, uh, no, that's a great question.
Thank you.
We're taking care of a public health roof.
Yeah.
Public health parking lot, which has to be done. Kim had a few extra little things that she wanted to add for, and honestly, honest things that I think would definitely add value. Not only to, to public usage of the public health department, but also for staff. We're gonna add those things, you know, the HVAC system upgrade. We've been piecemealing those four rooftop units since I've been the Director of Facilities. Uh, almost every single year, we're up there replacing components on those. So that's being taken care of. So when we think about major infrastructure changes, that stuff's all wrapped up in ARPA. L E C HVAC system wrapped up in ARPA, courthouse HVAC system. We put a new roof on the courthouse on the flats last year, so we're in a good position there. The only thing long term, and this is no surprise to the board, is the exterior of that courthouse. We originally talked about that when I came on board. There was a study done on that sandstone. Of cleaning it up, chipping it, uh, sealing it again to make sure that we get another hundred years out of it. That's a massive expenditure that should probably be done in the next twenty to twenty-five years. But that's a twenty million dollar massive expenditure. So we need to make the decision and always needs to be in the thought process of the board. What do we do with that expenditure? Is that something where we consider at some point in time, ten, twenty years from now, we no longer use that building? Or do we spend that, that infrastructure money?
Well, see, that's a good point. And we have a major projects account. We've had that in the past. Have to think about where we're at. I don't have that number in front of me right now. But should we be allocating a certain amount of money every year? We should anyway, for the unknown, because we could have unknowns happen next year that you don't contemplate. Can't contemplate every possibility, uh, within the context of, of a budget. So, yeah, it might be that we start putting some money away. Future boards will have to decide what they want to do with the building. But we can get them part of the way there with some savings, uh, some, some reserves. That's not a bad idea, that all to think about. There will be other things over the next twenty years that need to be replaced, repaired and changed. So.
Yeah, in all honesty, most of our infrastructure is gonna have massive updates.
Yeah.
They're public buildings that are used on a, a regular basis with a fairly large amount of traffic through them. My role as Facilities Director is both proactive and reactive. We can try to plan our best proactively, but ninety percent of what we do is reactive, because even the new stuff breaks.
Yeah, and I'd like to note also that there's, there's a lot of costs that can't be quantified in these line items. You know, you know, and I'd, I'd like you to speak to that, because I know we're, I know we're saving quite a bit of money by doing stuff in-house.
Absolutely.
But it just, it's just not quantified in them?
No, and, and that's something I can never quantify, uh, other than have the opportunity to share with the board, um, and other departments what we're actually saving. So from day one, and, and you're all well aware of this in the last three years, that we took almost eighty percent at minimum of what we used to farm out and started doing in-house, because we have the staff that's talented enough and qualified enough to do those things. So we've been able to get a lot more bang for our buck. Um, as an example, Andrew Jahan, our IT Director, and I have been working on security upgrades at the courthouse. We've been talking about this for two years. One simple thing, like mortising the doors for the new locks is a thirty-five thousand dollar savings. And that required me on our metal mill to make a jig out of a piece of angle iron and set it up for the router. That's a thirty-five thousand dollar savings to mortise some locks and drill some holes through some brick. Uh, we're, right now, Joe and I, as you know, Derek had his child, so he is, and that's an awesome thing, but he is not around right now as he shouldn't be. We're finishing, we did all the plumbing upgrade at the L E C for the HVAC system. So that's a, almost forty-eight thousand dollar savings. That's just two simple, small projects. It'd be very difficult to quantify every dime that we save versus farming something out. The reality of it is, our budget probably would shift, but the services we render would absolutely shift.
Right.
Um, I wouldn't have to say we need to double the budget if we're gonna hire everything out. I would just tell you, no, a lot more. If, if that was the case. Uh, talking future projects. You know, County Engineer and Steve Edwards, Conservation Director, we've had conversations about starting to take between the three of us the G C responsibilities on our major infrastructure projects in-house, because we're all three capable of doing that and sharing that load together. Not only from design perspective, but you think about general, a, a general contractor isn't actually doing any work in most cases. They're overseeing a project. They're, they're ensuring that you're only opening one bid that day, because they went out and sought those individual bids for, for any said project. And then they oversee the project. Well, that overseeing of the project, our courthouse elevator project, was four hundred thousand dollars of the general conditions for that G C to be there. You think about how much more we can do from a county perspective when it comes to our infrastructure projects, if we take those responsibilities in-house. That's more that gets done with the same amount of money and always better for the taxpayer. And all three of us are qualified to do that and to share that load.
Yeah, I think that's a great thought.
Yeah, I thought it should be noted that this stuff can't be quantified.
Yeah, that, that, that right there, I mean, that could, that could, on, on large projects, we even smaller ones, it adds up over time. If we're handling that all in-house.
I was talking to Steve Edwards, I see he's on, we actually ran into each other this morning. The G C fees on his building is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, all said and done. Imagine how much more we can, plus they get, I think Steve was telling me, ten percent of the overall project cost. There's an awful lot of things we can do in-house, and you think about the size and scope of the County Engineers upcoming project. You're talking about seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars in G C fees, when we're all capable of doing that.
So, so Chris, are you telling me that, that's part of the plan?
That's, that's what we're talking about right now.
Is that, will G C that?
We're, we're talking about it right now. I do not want to speak for Tyler on that, but we've had some good initial conversations. And I think there's a great possibility that we can share that load. If you think about what I'm doing at the V A right now, that's what I'm doing. I'm G C in a demo contract.
Right.
I walk out there every day, or what, technically I drive. I don't, I don't walk from here over to the V A. But drive out there, make sure things are on time, on budget, and work's progressing. You know, that, that's what we're doing.
Did we save fees there, or I can't remember? Did we have to pay a general contractor fee, or is that, are you doing all?
Mike is the general contractor on that project. They're kind of a unique deal, because they G C and provide labor. Uh, Vault Team, for example, when they did the courthouse. Those were all external contractors that were subs for Vault Team that did the physical work. Vault Team was there to ensure it got done. They were helping talk, talk through prints, making sure schedules were met. That was almost a four hundred thousand dollar cost for us to have that service.
Will they, will a lot of places be willing to do that? And I just say that, I'm, I'm asking that as a general question, as a woman, I, you know. You know, will they say, because you know what, I, I'm using my own references, like when I did my house, I was my own general contractor, um, my husband and I. But a lot of places, like, you know, lenders, or I didn't know if bonding companies would allow you to do that, you know? So if we were ever have to bond, I didn't know in the case of like the V A project.
I can't imagine there would ever be a stipulation to that. You know, there are some stipulations when it comes to design services, because we're a public entity, that would be the only thing that could, could potentially slow that up. But a design service, i.e. an engineer signing off on a set building, they're not taking on any G C responsibilities. All they're saying is, we certify that this meets current building code and that's safe structure for the public. That's a requirement that, you know, we don't know exactly how our, our county engineer could fit into that yet. There's some stipulations on anti-compete clauses and things like that, but that's a discussion we're also having. But at the end of the day, a G C is still working with subs. Sub is going to work for the, for the actual job and for the contract.
So you, you checking on insurance for that too, Chris?
Yeah, we'd have to look into insurance on that.
Biggest, biggest component to G C is liability.
Yep.
So we would just have to make sure our insurance addresses.
Yep.
And usually when the G C has a con, or a question, he comes to the, he comes to the, to the, uh,
I would tell you, Steve, you're absolutely right. Every single day, Vault Team had a question for me about that project. So at the end of the year, a hundred percent correct of that, any good reputable G C who wants his customer happy, when there's a question about anything, they're gonna talk to the customer. So we still have to fill that role anyway. We're still there. We still have to make, help make those decisions. I, I just think it's a natural progression we have to make, especially as we think about the cost of material. You know, we went from material costs roughly somewhere in the fifty dollar a square foot range. We're at four X that now for, for construction, just for material. So it'd be really difficult for us to say, let's just stop improving our infrastructure, because we can't afford to, when we have the ability in-house to take those roles and responsibilities on.
No, I think it's a great idea, Chris. Yeah, just checked on the, my, my biggest thing would be the liability fees of it. What that would do to our insurance by taking it on. I can't. Just have to make sure our policies cover us taking that on, because it's been in the past, we've worked on projects, that's always been a component, even before you came on board. Thinking about that G C role, because they have their own liability insurance. So you're able to farm off a little bit of that risk to somebody else. But if we think we've got the expertise, can save the dollars, you're basically gonna shift some of those dollars to maybe a little bit of increased insurance cost.
I've got, I've got a couple of questions for you. So the ARPA, and I'm just looking at some of your, your line items. Do you think you can save, I mean, could, I mean, even coming, you know, this next year with like the law enforcement center, you know, we've got like twenty thousand for, you know. Do you think you'll have to, I mean, you think ARPA will, you know, cover most of that, or, you know?
No, that's just maintenance money.
Just maintenance, okay.
Yeah, every line item, so what I did is, if you see a line item on here that's designated law enforcement center, whether, whether it's fixed plan equipment or building an upkeep, that is money we're going to probably spend no matter what.
Yeah, it's outside of our.
It's outside of our. So what I didn't add this year was, uh, so we're completely clear on that. What I didn't add was say, hey, we need an extra six hundred thousand so we can upgrade the HVAC system. Our, our building, the infrastructure, and I'm not gonna slam any of our buildings. We're, we're operating fairly efficiently in those buildings that are working. At the end of the day, any major structure costs a massive amount of money to upkeep. And we don't have to look past our own houses to see how much do you, I mean, maybe we all don't track that, but I track what I have to spend in maintenance on my own home every year. That's a fairly massive amount of money, just to live there. And, and then you compound that by not only this work footage, but the uses of our buildings. Uh, there's, there's some fairly high maintenance costs to having the buildings that we have.
How is that, is the annex building cost, how much does that cost us?
It actually doesn't cost us a lot much, because it doesn't get a whole lot of use. You can definitely see the, the difference between high-traffic buildings, um, and low-traffic buildings. So the annex is an extremely low-cost building. I think total on, I'm guessing on six three, I'd budget somewhere around a total maybe of ten thousand between different line items on that building. Basically enough if we had a, a furnace go out and some plumbing issues to take care of.
Who's in it right now, Chris?
Uh, right now you got Juvenile Court Services and a small sect of D H S.
Well, you have two sections of D H S.
But only one's utilized in the building. You know, Impact is on, so you basically have a, a very small footprint of staff over there.
We got any space, any other space we can put them?
Certainly.
Where?
Uh, fourth floor of courthouse.
Do you have that in here, what, uh, redoing that?
Our, most of the expenses in that is already purchased in this year's budget.
Do you think you'll get that done then, in twenty-two?
Yeah, if, uh, the unplanned,
The contracts of the twenty-three.
Upgrades have slowed that up a little bit.
Okay.
The unplanned HVAC upgrades take precedent over, uh, fourth floor at this point.
Might be something to think about. I mean, moving that, moving them out and trying to get rid of that building. Sell that building. Then we take some of that money and we put it into a project fund, just like we did with, when we sold the county.
Sure.
Which, which side of D H S is not occupied?
Well, technically it's all occupied when you think about, they don't have anybody stationed in the basement, but if you think about where the front door is up the wheelchair ramp. You've got, from that hallway to the north is D H S, um, the, the whole of the building.
They use the basement though, don't they, for something for conference?
And used for them. I think it's for child visits possibly, or just rental visits.
It's for visitation.
And then if you were to make a left and go south in that hallway, now you're talking about Juvenile Court Services, which is a lot smaller space.
We're only required to provide space for one half of D H S. The other half is through rental.
But you, but you're thinking once fourth floor is done.
Realistically, we don't have to completely gut, our original plan was to gut, remodel, reconfigure fourth floor.
Right.
It doesn't have to happen. You know, we've got the material and the tools to do that at any time. We could do a rush job on it, do a quality rush job on it and get that up and going in a couple of months.
I think that contract, like we talked about, I think we are contracted with them at that building till the, I think it's twenty-three.
Yeah.
I think you're correct.
September of twenty-three.
So we do have a little bit of time. The only, the only caveat to fourth floor, um, and I'm in a hundred percent support of this, is if you think about the north side down that hallway, those two office spaces there, we are continually thinking about how that best, that space can best be utilized for courthouse personnel. And, and I think from an auditor's perspective, they've had a, a wonderful ability to do some training up there. And I would definitely say that building is in need of a secondary conference room. So my plan right now is that space becomes conference room. We're gonna pull the dividing wall out between those two office spaces and get the hallway wall out, because structurally we can, and then just open that space up to, to more of a conference-type training setting.
Do you think you would have enough room on the south side to house D H S and court services?
Absolutely.
So who's, uh, make a note, I want to get a copy of that contract. It's gotta have a termination clause, an out clause. It's, the only reason it's gonna be locked in is for rate and pricing. So if it does, maybe we can speed this up.
Well, and then we could actually, so if you think about that, I know, um, the County Attorney, Ed Bullen, I, I myself have had a conversation about juvenile court services. We have counselled office in the basement, which you have to look past what it looks like right now, but in a very short order, we could have that. I mean, Steve was just out yesterday, we could have that emptied out, new drop ceiling put in. We have accessibility to get a, a spare heat pump put in there, which we have new heat pumps still on the show. Uh, we could dress that room up and give them an office space in the basement, since we have elevator access to it, and now we're just talking D H S.
Luckily now we have a disability access.
We have disability access.
Well, the, the biggest thing I'm thinking about, Chris, is taking advantage of the real estate market now.
Absolutely.
Instead of waiting two more years and have it not be. Because that's what's been the problem with that building in the past. No one's wanted it. This is more advantageous to us right now, so.
You know, we had, we had discussions about using it internally, but, but the parking lend, does not lend itself to that.
Yeah, it would be a terrible apartment building, but yeah.
We'll take a look at that contract, see what our, see if there are provisions in there, and maybe we can move on this a lot faster.
Hey, I was wondering, has Watson's been able to be back in and finish that conference room?
They're getting to the point where he's starting to get freed up. Because of the way, and, and this was a decision that I had made when we were in the remodel of courthouse. You guys all understand how the construction market went. Because of how much money we were able to save when they came in and did that project. I mean, we were so far below our public bid threshold, it wasn't even funny. They were by, by far the cheapest per square foot to get quality material installed. They offset a whole bunch of their work to get that done. So in fairness to them, I'm letting them catch up. If, if we pushed, they would be here tomorrow. I'm just not pushing them. I want to make sure they can get their, their other contracts filled.
I just don't want it to, as long as we have the product on hand and it, you know, it matches, so.
Very good. Chris, anything else, anything else you want to highlight on your budget right now? It seems pretty straightforward.
Safe, because of the change month.
What about staff, Chris? I mean, you guys are doing a lot. You haven't grown in staff. You've taken a lot in-house. You're pretty confident that you've got the, the number of people to handle. We've done some major projects, courthouse remodel, uh, we're doing a lot of the ARPA fund stuff right now, so that's big stuff. After that's done, we get into more of a maintenance mode for a while.
I keep telling myself that's true.
That's, I'm just, I'm just gonna throw that out there. Well, I don't see anything in your budget that tells me otherwise right now, so. We know there are surprises. We get that. There are things that come up. But are you confident right now in terms of staff levels and you can handle what comes and barring something massive?
Barring something catastrophic, and we've had this discussion in the past, in past budget meetings. My biggest apprehension is yes. Would I like to add another person so I can stop working sixty-plus hours a week? Yes, I would like to do that.
Why aren't you?
Because of the statement you just made. What do I do with that individual when our major projects are caught up?
And I appreciate your perspective.
The last thing I want to do is I'm, you have had the privilege, and I have had the privilege of working together in the past. I'm always thinking years ahead. I'm not a, I'm gonna stop thinking about today and the end of the day is how far my brain stops. I'm thinking about years down the road. And years down the road tells me when our major projects are over with, I don't know how I keep a third qualified person at thirty-plus dollars an hour plus benefits busy.
Good.
And we're, we're, we're very blessed in the fact that, especially when we consider Joe and Derek. I've got two guys that are extremely qualified, extremely dedicated, and they show up. And when they show up, they function. And they function independent. I don't have to babysit.
That's good.
So without that component, I would probably want to add two people. But while they're here, and all signs point to them being here for the long haul. Makes sense that we take on the extra responsibility now. I pay that little bit of overtime when I need to. And when we get into hopefully a maintenance mode, a more proactive mode, we don't have an extra. I mean, what's the real, and we need to think about, that an extra hundred thousand dollar expense with benefits.
No, good.
I have a question. I saw that last, um, well, actually, you know, this year's budget. But I mean, when we look at where you're at, um, exceeding in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, um, and you've just put ten thousand. Are you guys gonna still do some of that yourself? Are you contracting that out, or?
Which aspect?
Um, on mowing.
Mowing? So I'm actually gonna post a public bid for mowing contracts, so I can start thinking about it. At the end of the day, here's my dilemma on mowing. You know, the V A was a no-brainer, because we had sought bids for the cost of mowing the V A. It's very difficult to put two guys at the, not only the level that they're making, but their ability on a mower and have it done, and, and do it cheaper in-house. So I need to see where we're looking at for twenty-two. Fuel cost, equipment cost alone, I guarantee you, it's gonna cost a lot more this year to have people mow than it did last year. So there's a fine line, so I'm gonna seek bids, take a look at that. So I can't tell you one way or the other until I receive that public bid information on, is it make more sense for us to mow? Or is it cheaper for the taxpayer to have someone else mow the property?
Right, no, and I just, that's, I just, I, I was just looking at it, because you know, I would assume that it was gonna increase, but, um, I mean, it leaves a little bit of wiggle room in your budget, so yeah.
Yeah, and I, I, I left it that number the same, because Ms. John, or we can change that anytime. I can pull from Rob Peter to pay call. There's enough.
Yeah, no, you've got enough. I saw what you, what you had a balance of, so, okay. Alright, that was, that's all the questions I have.
Steve, anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, Chris, thank you, and to the staff, thank you. You guys have done a, a lights-out job this past year. I know it's not easy. You get demands from a variety of places and people and, and.
And especially when I get in the way.
Especially when McCombs gets in the way.
That does happen from time to time.
But I appreciate you guys taking him on as kind of, you know, keeping track of him.
It's a good apprenticeship program for him.
Yeah, I like that.
So it is working out.
Keeps him out of trouble. We know where he's at.
You know where he's at. I've got beautiful, we, we made a handmade leash.
Oh, wow.
So we can keep him, you know, from running along too much, so.
Very good. Well, Chris, thank you, and for all the work that you guys are doing for the V A. Very good, well, Chris, thank you, and, uh, for all the work that you guys are doing for the VA, you guys are doing. You've done personally lights out on that, uh, we would not be where we are. Without that, so, um, that's all we got for now.
Thank you, Chris.
So thank you. Missy. Zoning.
Wow, we're right on time, nine twenty nine.
Well, yeah. What'd you think?
I mean, we need that little buzzer. Oh wait, that would be Danny. Time's up, onto the next one.
All right, Missy, let me find your page first. You figure after ten years I have your number memorized, but.
Yeah, what number is that?
Number ten.
And you're one of the unique ones that gets to go to under rural services, the basic.
All right, Missy, give me, give me the highlights.
Um, my budget changed very little, um, so back in last April, we had. A discussion with Keisha and Lisa, I did, uh, put in a line item to utilize the floater. Part-time person we have at the courthouse, and that was through last budget year was just absorbed through the. Planning and management line, but I did add a line item this year, and so you will see that my FICA. And IFRS went up to accommodate that, Barbara helps me anywhere from typically two to three hours. A week on Thursdays, she helps with, you know, projects, um, paperwork administrative projects. Mailings when I'm getting ready for meetings, you know, proofing, getting stuff like that ready on the weeks that there's nothing. That I need to utilize her for, I let her know ahead of time, and then she goes to one of the other departments, so. But it, it has been helpful, especially when I'm trying to get ready for meetings, and we have three or four agenda items come in that. To have a little extra staff there, otherwise, I made a couple of small adjustments, um. Just doing an estimate of for the sickly buyout mileage I increased a little bit. Otherwise, the only change was, you know, the. I, I based the salary increase off of what we were given as the projected cost of living and based on. What the compensation board had their recommendation, that's what I based my, uh, salary increase at. I will say, last year, because some of the. Um, ordinance updates that we're working on didn't move forward as quickly as possible, there was. Sixteen thousand lost in the budget at the end of the year, um. But I do anticipate we're gonna use that this year, our kickoff meeting for that ordinance update is next week. Once we get that done, I'm looking that we have some. Updates that need to be made to the subdivision, and then probably the town plan the following year, so. This year, we've addressed some, with this ordinance update, obviously we'll address some. Issues that have been ongoing for many, many years, so. It's been a busy year, we've had a lot more commercial and industrial expansion and proposed expansion coming forward, so.
Missy, what are some of the, from a regulatory standpoint, what are some of the things that are not in the budget? We've talked about it in the past, but. When we talk about cleaning up sites, doing those things, what would that entail? If we went, if we went down the road of saying we're going to take a more active role. From a zoning standpoint, uh, regulating. Some of the sites we've done, where we, we, we've done it on a one-off basis.
I mean, currently zoning doesn't have built in the authority to do that, so we've used. The public or the, um, environmental health ordinance to move forward, we have a very outdated forty-five-year-old. Um, dan- or damaged building ordinance, we, we've looked at several times over the past. Ten years in my role as zoning administrator to draft a dangerous building ordinance that would. Help us move forward in some of these cleanups, um, I know we've got a few out there, we did get. One came down in Attica that had been ongoing, and we, so actually, we got two cleaned up in Attica this year. And that was done on behalf of the property owner, I mean, they, they took care of themselves, but, um.
Are we getting a lot of public, I mean, it's, it would seem to me that that would be something, like in the one property we have, don't remember the location. But the public, there.
We've got one right now.
There were neighbors that actually said, we, we gotta do something about this.
We have, we have, um, at least one of those right now.
Do you still have the one that's in Pleasantville area, and do you still have the one that's in the Lytton area? Or Ottley, I'm sorry, Ottley area, that's in the town, did that get cleaned up with the?
I wanna go back to what I was asking, do you get a lot of public, I mean, are we seeing an increase in that? Or are we seeing, is it kind of in constant where you get maybe one, maybe two a year?
That where we fall back in, in the discussion that we've had numerous times is that we have been given direction, we act. On a written complaint or a formal complaint only, so phone calls don't count. If, you know, we can send out a notice to say, hey, you're, you know, your properties, you. You need to address some things before it becomes a formal complaint, but the problem is if they don't do anything about it. We then can't move forward to the, the court process, we do have one that is. Probably, it's on, on the heavy radar, Bridget's been working closely on it, I've been working closely on it, um. I, I don't know, so there was two thou- two hundred thousand put into a fund in Fund Ninety-nine. That was what we use to work on projects like that, basically, we would. Go through the process, and then if we get down to the, they've not cleaned it up, then we come forward to you as a board to say, we need. Money to clean this up.
I guess what I'm trying to get a feel for is, we put that money aside specifically for this?
Correct.
Uh, we did that, what, like four years ago, Missy, something like that, four, five years ago? So, A, is that enough to set aside for these types of things, given the current process and the use of the process?
I, I think the process needs to be updated, we've had, we've had that discussion, you and I have had that discussion. We are addressing a couple of other things that you've been a part of, um, as. We're, we're addressing, for lack of other, some, with the, the rental inspections that have taken place in a couple of cities. We know how people that are living in. What we're gonna call one step above homeless, and, and those then, how do we address them environmentally? How do we address, address them as a zoning, it's harder to address them as a zoning. Nuisance with what we have, that's something as we move forward with the ordinance update that I want to. Talk with Andrew Collins about, um, you know, we have an allowance right now that you can live in a camper for up to a year. And, and that was put in place so that people build the house, snowbirds that come back for a few months a year, that ability's there. But when we're now looking at that from a different perspective, we now have people that. That's a long time if we have people that are being forced out into the county and living in, so. We're definitely seeing different, a, a change of what, the, the happenings. Um, in the past twenty years.
Right, so I guess that's what I'm getting at, Missy, is. And not that you have to go into it in great detail right now, and you've kind of given, given us a flavor, but is there a plan? When do you think those upgrades, or at least those proposed upgrades to ordinances will be ready so that. Both your board and this board can see those, we can think about what we're seeing? Just like with Knoxville or with other towns, we're seeing a change demographically. Because of ordinance changes or economic changes, we're seeing that in the county as well, are we ready to meet that challenge?
As a part, you know, for the things that are a part of the zoning ordinance update, I believe the target is July, August. That we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna start to kick off, we're gonna have. Want Steve as a representative from the board involved to get a direction of which way the county wants to go. And then the planned target, um, as put out by NPO is that. By July, August, we'd be ready for that to come forward to the board supervisor.
Okay, very good.
Overseeing that though, that's a, I mean, obviously a collaboration with environmental health, how much time would that be, I mean? Because, I mean, if we, if we were to change how that process is done, and. You know, if it wasn't complaint driven, like you had to do a formal, and we actually had somebody out there looking.
You could have a full-time person out there looking, if that's the route we wanna go.
Yeah, but we're looking now at an enforcement officer when.
You are.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's, yeah, that's what I was looking at the bigger picture.
Honestly, if, if that's the route we wanna go and be more like the cities, you could keep a full-time person out there. Um, working on nothing but complaints. Because the hard part is that we have, even though people will talk to us about them, they, they don't want to put their name on the line. They don't want us to the complaint, um, so the best we can do is keep nudging people and. We get, you know, fifty, sixty percent of them cleaned up by nudging them that, hey, let's clean this up before it's. A formal complaint, but i- if we were to change our co-enforcement policies. I mean, you could, yeah, it, it would be pretty much a full-time job out there.
But an enforcement policy or an enforcement officer would only be as good as the ordinance on the books that are enforcing.
Yeah.
Correct.
True, true. What's, um, when you look at other counties, Missy, what are they doing, counties that are similarly situated, are they going to the enforcement officer route? Matching their ordinance accordingly, or are they still doing it?
The majority of the counties that I work closely with, Warren County, Maske County, the counties that. Um, Guthrie County, go, they all still work on a complaint basis.
Would think the liability would go up dramatically if we go the enforcement officer route. I'm not even, I'm not even in favor of that.
Yeah, that's a, that's.
Not even in favor of that idea, for two reasons, number one, liability, unless we can quantify what that is. And number two, I think we're still in a position, although we are seeing changes, the ordinance needs to be changed. And updated to meet current circumstances, agreed. But I do think residents that live in these areas, there needs to be a little bit of self-policing. And I think if you say and invest local government or any government entity with that power, you're ceding that power away. Uh, uh, and we've seen too much of that, where people are just willing to cede it off to the government and say, you take care of it. That way, it's not on us until this, until the lawsuit comes, right?
Correct.
So I, I'm not, not quite there yet, I'd have to be convinced that it's such a problem that our public can't keep up with it.
The majority of the counties, like you said, that I work closely with have not gone to that level of. Enforcement at this point.
Good, that's good to know. All right, budget-wise, Missy, you've got, so, increase-wise, about six percent, if I saw that, I see that right?
Correct.
I'll take my glasses off, take a look, uh, any other expense? What's that?
About six and a half.
Okay, six and a half, any other, I don't see anything else unusual.
No, uh, the other thing that I'm gonna be doing is, and I do every few years, and, and I haven't done for a few, is to. Review other county fee, our fee schedule to see where we're at in line with other counties as far as, um, I know. Obviously, some counties are a lot higher, those are the ones that have building inspections, but to look at where we fall as far as permit fees. We haven't adjusted those for. A few years, so, I think about five, so.
And your projection, you think, um, you know, building permits, things like that, you feel like it's going to?
Already, yeah, it's, it's insane, and last year again was. Uh, we were at a hundred and seventy-two building permits, sixty-one of them were homes with over four million dollars in homes. There was seventeen variances, rezonings and site plans, and there was fifty-four land divisions. Um, so, we've got at least two or three big commercial or industrial expansions that are being proposed. We've got one just down the road here, we've got several, uh, inquiries about. Land division, subdivision, so, yeah, it, it's definitely keeps moving forward.
And your contract, your, um, you know, we use, you know, some legal services, um. Do you feel, is that your light item there with, uh, thirty-six thousand, is that, okay, all right, so.
And fifteen thousand of what's left this year will be then used for the contract with NPO.
All right, that's all I had.
Good, Missy, anything else you wanna add?
No, I believe that's it.
All right.
Thank you, I know you've taken on a lot, I appreciate it.
Steve, any questions?
No.
No, all right.
Thank you.
Missy, thank you very much.
Thanks, Missy.
Very good.
You guys wanna keep rolling?
Actually, just take five minutes and then. Missy, put us ahead of schedule, we don't want that. Let's have a motion to go into a five-minute recess.
Make motion to go into.
Where the buildings are now.
Five minutes recess.
Second. Aye.
Remy.
Aye.
Johnor.
Aye.
All right, we're in recess.
Handy-dandy calculator, you know, your phone has one of those, right?
I know.
A motion to come back into a session.
Reconvene into session, please, make that motion.
Second.
Remy.
Aye.
Johnor.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
All right, very good, we're with Andrew DeHahn, and we are going to talk IT, the IT budget, Andrew, thank you for putting this into a. Spreadsheet format, I appreciate that greatly, but if you could just kind of go through the high points of your budget, uh, projects. That are maybe listed in it, that you'd be aware of, raises, salaries, that, those types of things, give us the, give us the high, uh, high level view.
Sure, so, um, thanks again for having me again, um, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about my department. Um, this year, um, is very challenging for IT as. As Chris was talking about earlier, you know, with the, with the increases and, and costs. Um, the unknowns in IT are probably even, even harder to guess, uh, with chip shortages and. Basically, everything we buy comes from overseas, um, it's, it's really a guessing game at, at, at this. And also probably even more so, um, kind of a, a, a hope and a prayer because I didn't want to triple my budgets, so. Um, which is what the costs are right now, uh, for a lot of the equipment that we, I buy out of this budget, so. The items that I buy out of my bu- budget is, is countywide software and hardware. Uh, that's the, the big things, and so those are the two main line items that you see there, uh, two twenty-eight and two twenty-nine. Um, and those are the items that have a substantial increase in them. Uh, this is about half the cost that I've been quoted from my vendors for software and hardware. Um, I'm hoping that they aren't this high, if they are this high, I'll probably have to cut some things. Uh, as high as they, they're saying, um, so, uh, or we'll, we'll have to delay projects or things like that. Um, so, increasing in the hardware, software, that is infrastructure type of upgrade, servers, uh, switches, firewalls. Uh, things that every office uses in the backend, basically the stuff that are in our server rooms. That's the stuff that is bought in there, software is, um, our solution software is, is, is over half the cost of that. Uh, they have told me anywhere from ten to twenty percent increase for next year. Um, and that's the best they could give me, so. Um, my, my vendors that I typically pay, uh, for high, high-level stuff that we don't know how to do. Um. They have said that their increases are gonna be forty percent increase over next year. Um, I did not increase that planning and management, uh, line, network and services line this year. I felt like we could probably absorb that part, um, based on some of the projects that we have coming up. Um, based on some of the projects that we have coming up. We have, uh, different projects year over year that we work on. Um, and some projects I have better expertise in, some projects I have less expertise in. Um, and so, uh, the years that I have better expertise in, I could probably absorb more of that, uh, that external labor. Um, so I felt like this year I can absorb some of those cost in, cost increases in, in hopes that. Maybe they aren't quite as high as what they are. You know, it's, it's just really hard to budget. IT when I don't know what the costs are gonna be tomorrow, let alone. Uh, a year and a half of that, so, um, we're doing our best with it. Um, salary increases, we, we kind of stuck to that six percent, which was, um. It, it's probably low on the industry, but I thought it was relatively fair as far as, uh, the cost of living and, and things like that. Go, um, it's really more of a kind of a cost of living adjustment, but, um, we are kind of. We're, we're probably low on our, on our industry area, uh, and, and you can look at those metrics lots of different ways. Um, you know, and so, and we can have that conversation sometime if you'd like. Uh, I just plugged in six percent because I thought that was relatively fair based on today's climate. Um. And really, other than that, those two line items and the health insurance, that's pretty much the, the increase in the budget. I did wanna talk to you a little bit about some revenue, which I have never had before.
That's who's gonna ask you about, yeah.
So, um, I'm trying to get a little bit creative and decrease some of the increase. Um, where they ask, we've taken on a couple of projects this year. And, um, Knoxville PD was a, a project we took, we decided we'd help out with Sheriff's Office this year. They have decided they would like to try to get on to Shieldware, uh, which is the same software that we use for our Sheriff's Office. Uh, it's also the same software that Pleasantville PD has been using from us for years. Um, Shieldware lets counties multi-home their environment. And lets other, uh, agencies inside your county hop onto that same network. And so to do that, I s- I told, I told, uh, Chief Fuller that we would take them on, um, but. There's gonna be a cost to that because we have some licensing costs, we have some labor costs involved. Uh, that, uh, we're gonna incur. And so I said we, we would, we would charge them five thousand dollars, which is about a thousand dollars a user. Uh, for them to be on our system. They agreed to that. And we thought that was fair and we felt like we could handle their, um, the increase on that. The majority of it is licensing and setup. Once they're set up, it shouldn't be all that.
Is that one-time dollars or is this?
That's annual.
This is annual, okay.
So we, we felt like that was a, a fair annual cost to the IT department to maintain their net, their connectivity to us. And we have to do some things to make sure that they stay safe and secure and they're, they're limited and things, but we're doing all those things. With that, then I talked to Chief of Police at Pleasantville and said, you know, it's not gonna be very, very fair. For Knoxville if I charge them but not you, uh, because you're doing the same thing, so. Uh, they agreed to the same sort of compensation for their department as, as ours, so that's six of that. Ten thousand dollars of revenue. The other revenue is, uh. Even more creative, um, although it's, it's being done in other areas, uh, other counties. And it's something I wanna talk to you at some point about. And basically what that is, is generating revenue off of. Uh, items that we provide to non-Marian County entities. So, for example, we give a lot of GIS, uh, data requests. To, um, non-Marian County businesses that take that data and resell it. So a lot of counties, what they do is they charge for that. They charge a flat fee for aerial imagery, for instance. If a company says, I'd like to have all your aerial imagery for your county. Right now, we just give that to them. We don't charge them. That's what we've always done. There are a lot of counties that have a flat fee for that. If you're outside of Marion County and you're a business. That you're gonna take that data and turn around and make money off of it, well, the Marion County taxpayers have paid for that data.
Wait, you know, we should be charging for that.
So the, the idea is that we would build a policy, develop a policy that has a fee structure. That says, we're gonna start charging for that.
Yeah, do that.
Yeah, I agree.
So, uh, so it's, it's called information request because it, sometimes it's aerial imagery, sometimes it's shape files. Sometimes it's just different types of GIS data, sometimes it's IT data, um, sometimes it's metrics, things like that, so.
Right.
Um, what I kind of initially thought about, and you guys can have it, you guys will tell me what you want, but. Um, I initially thought if it's a non-Marian County entity, which means it's a non-county taxpayer. Um, then there's a, a fee structure for whatever type of data they're asking for.
I do think, um, and I, I don't know how we could go about doing this, but let's say. I mean, I'm, I'm being maybe a pessimistic a little bit in the aspect of, let's, let's say that they would reach out and they would get somebody in the county to request it. And you have multiple, you know, is there a limit in which you're requesting information?
Well, clearly, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know where. Request starts and where a fee can start, so I think we would definitely have to have counsel advise us on what we can, can't charge for. What constitutes an open records request versus what constitutes an actual feeable thing. Um, but, um.
But if you have a precision egg company out in Western Iowa gathering information on field data. I know because I used to do that.
Yeah.
So you should be charging for that. We always paid for all those shape files.
Yeah.
We'd go to those different entities and pay for all that, so I absolutely, don't worry. That's a, we'll deal with the nuances of FOIA versus.
I, I think we, we need to write a policy, basically, and just say, you know, policy and, and have the, have our county attorney review it and make sure we've done everything.
I just know of so many of those businesses that they're, um, they're employed at home and they work for a bigger company and they're, they request that information and resell it. That's why, I, you know, I brought up that point.
Be a loophole, we'll have to. Yep, so I, I don't have any clue what kind of revenue that's gonna generate. I have no idea. I just threw some numbers in there. Um, you know, so, you know, based on some, some ideas and what some other counties have, have done.
Yeah.
Um, but I do know this is not a new thing. Other counties are doing this, um, so.
So Andrew, I wanna come back to the projects you've got listed here. Are, are we looking at something that's a trend? You're gonna grow this? Are we looking at?
Uh, which major are you looking at?
I'm looking at your PD projects for Knoxville and Pleasantville.
Yes.
Is this something that's going to grow? Are you actively seeking these projects or?
No, this, this is a project.
They dovetailed off of what you were doing for the Sheriff's Office. We probably won't see a lot of this.
No, this is a very specific one-off project. Uh, it's, it's gonna be an annual occurrence as long as they keep using it, but it's a one-off project.
And the only reason I ask is the more of that you do with existing staff, you, you strain that. So that takes away from our stuff.
Correct.
So, alright, good.
So this, the, the reason that I felt this was okay was because we're, it, we're kind of already doing it for the Sheriff's Office. It's not a lot of effort to maintain some extra PD machines. But that being said, I would like to turn your attention to the graph. Well, let, first, maybe let's look at the, the granted benefits, because this is also kind of a direct. Um, so this sheet right here that I gave you guys.
Okay.
Um, this is kind of a direct general fund decrease for me, for my department. Um, so what this is, is, it's a, it's a, um, it's not a grant that you typically would, um. See for like, you know, maybe Kim's department or Jeff's department or somebody where they get grant dollars. And then they turn around and spend the grant dollars on a thing. This is, uh, in, in-kind type of grant, so. They've put a signed dollar figure too. So I apply for these grants for these devices or software and they turn around and give them to me. Um, if I had to buy them myself, this is what they would typically cost, so. Um, would I buy all of these myself? Not, probably not all of them if I didn't get the grants. Um, but ninety-seven thousand dollars worth of. Materials, assets, grants, uh, things that we received, uh, over the last year and. I'm going to apply for all them again this year and I'll probably, I don't see why I wouldn't get them. Um. This stuff does a tremendous amount of benefit to us.
How competitive is that?
Very. It's, it's bought off the state. I can't buy this at this price. Yeah, it's, it's bought off the state contracts.
I mean, the grant. How, how, how competitive?
Oh, how competitive is the grant? Um, it's, it's not, it's not too competitive.
Okay.
It's, uh, they offer this pretty much to every county that applies for it. I have a few other items in here that. Uh, the Cisco Umbrella one, most counties don't have that, and the, um, Tenable, most counties don't have those, those two items. Uh, that we were able to get. Um, but other than that, I think most other counties can get the other ones. Um, CloudFlare is, is accessible by any county that hosts election information on their website, so that one's really easy to get. But this does a tremendous amount of, uh, security, cybersecurity stuff for us. It checks a lot of boxes for us from our cybersecurity insurance. It also just checks a lot of boxes from general security practice. Um, for us.
Seems like there's a lot, I mean, do you feel like there's? You have to have several different devices to be able to, I mean, you've got this malware and this malware blocker and like, wow.
It's, it's all, you gotta think of, uh, protection like an onion. You want, you want layers. You want lots of layers. You wanna go through lots of doors for that bad guy, um, which is complex, but, um. If, if one product misses something, hopefully your next one will catch it, you know, so you wanna have various layers of protection. Good question, though. Yes, we absolutely want.
So what happens if we, I mean, this, this, I mean, is this something that you? A, I mean, a couple different folds. Are we looking at it as, yeah, it's great that we can get the grant, the, the benefits from it and you're applying for them and we get them? But what happens if the grant becomes very competitive and we're not able to, this is a price that we could be looking at?
It is, it is definitely something that we would have to seriously think about. Because we have come to rely on these products to help protect us. There are several options of the same product out there at varying price points. Um, some are, are better, some are worse, so if we lost, say, Cisco Umbrella, for instance. I would absolutely probably be trying to find it or an alternative.
So why aren't they part of the budget?
Pardon me?
Why aren't they part of the budget?
Um, be, I don't know how to budget that from a revenue standpoint because it's like in-kind. That's what I'm trying, trying to tell you.
Right, no, get it, they're grants, but if you don't get the grant, you're saying we need it, right? That if we didn't.
Potentially, yeah.
If we didn't have it, we, something bad could happen. Bad actor gets in. That's what I'm hearing.
Right?
So why wouldn't it be part of the budget as a cost, as a fixed cost?
It would have to be.
If you get a grant to defray that cost, great. If you don't get the grant, at least we budgeted for it.
Yeah, and it would, it would be, Mark. This has granted a year in advance.
Okay.
So, um, I would know a year ahead of time if I was losing it.
Okay, so you. So you've got it now.
I've got it for next year, yeah.
Okay, so this is, yeah, alright, but that means that every year you go through this process. You've got it for the proceeding, it's a year, not a year in arrears, it's a year perspective.
Yes.
Alright.
Yes. So if I lost this or a, a part of it or any piece in here, then I would, I would add it into my budget. And then I would come to you and say, I'm adding this into my budget because I lost that.
Good.
Did that answer your question?
That's what I, that's what I needed to know.
Okay, so then I, if I could direct your attention to the, the graph sheet that I gave you with two graphs on it. Um, this is, this is going back to, to Mark's question earlier about, um. How stretched we are and, and this, as you can kind of see, I give you this graph every year, basically what it is, is, is our. Our kind of our growth of technology. That's that top-left graph. And the top-right graph basically is how, how much we're gaining by volume. Um, and you can see we're just really not decreasing our IT spend per device. Much anymore. Um, and, and what that tells me is we're, we're, we're kind of. We're kind of at our max capacity right now from, from staffing issues. So you can see here our help desk tickets continue to rise significantly. Um, our year-over-year expenses do go up. Um, but our, our technology demand increases a lot too, so, um. This, this isn't necessarily all that productive, other than to say, um. We're, we're getting to the point now where, uh, we're, we're basically at our capacity from, from a IT staffing issue. Um, we can, we can only take on so much more at, at our current capacity. We're, basically, we're never finishing our list. Our list never gets finished. We never, you know, we're, we're working, all of us are working overtime. And our list isn't finishing, so I don't know how long, much longer we can continue to, to go at this, at this level, but. You know, um, we've talked in the past about trying to reorganize the IT department, adding a security administrator. I think that would be a, a, a great thing to do. It's not in the budget this year. I didn't put it in there, but it's something I wanted you guys to be thinking about. And considering, you know, how do we, how do we, how do we keep growing? If we're gonna continue to grow, add more, uh, applications, add more things that we support, add more devices that we continue to support. It's, it's gonna start making more string eventually.
There's a, yeah, there's a point at which, when we start to rely on technology more, we created the website, posting more data. Now than we've ever posted before, probably getting more hits on our website than we've ever.
We're, we're more than double where we were last year.
Yeah, so that's, which is excellent. That's what we wanted by doing that. And now if we go to. Uh, creating some dashboards for budget, that's going to be another significant project, uh, which I think we need to do. This is something that we've got to be able to manage and manage all the unknowns that come with IT as well, as you know, Andrew. There's always something new out there, uh, somebody trying to do something. Okay, that's good. Yeah, I think it's a good reference point to say, maybe we've got to the point where we're at max efficiency or as efficient as you can be.
Could I, I can give you some reference points, um, for example, Warren County has five full-time IT. Jasper County has five full-time IT.
How is, um, GIS position, you know, that was to be a combined, um, is she helping there?
Yeah, Nicole's doing a great job with the very basic, um, help desk tickets, so she'll do a couple of help desk tickets a day. Um, the, the problem is our GIS is kind of taking off too, so. We've, I've added a lot of things on her plate for, we're building a lot of apps now. Uh, Nicole's doing those, so, uh, field collection apps is a huge thing that a lot of departments have really asked for. And it turns out those take a lot of work to do, so we've already got one field app going. Um, oh, Missy's not here anymore, hers is running, uh, and, and going great. Uh, we've got a huge one we're doing for environmental health, uh, for septics and setback is things, so all, Missy's with setbacks. The se- the septic systems is a big one they're wanting to do. Jeff has one that we're gonna do for signs. Um, I think the road department's got one they wanna do, so these apps are things that. You can put on your phone or a tablet, go out in the field and collect GPS coordinates on whatever data it is that you're trying to. Collect on, and they automatically go right into our GIS system from the field, so.
That's excellent.
They're awesome, fantastic pieces of technology and, and we're going, we're going gangbusters on this.
I, what I, what I really like, Andrew, is that, and you guys have done it, I mean, when, when I started looking at GIS ten years ago. And just the way we did GIS, it just seemed like it was just discordant. It wasn't, there was no connectivity between units. And now it seems like those things are coming together.
Yeah, we've done a lot of upgrades. We're on enterprise now, um, and we'll look here at the, at the GIS budget here in just a minute. Um, but we're, we're, we're building that up a lot. Um, and, and then I've also put the website on Nicole too, so she's doing all, pretty much all of the website work.
Okay.
Um, and you guys probably see her email come out every month, which is fantastic because we got relative, rela- relatively good. Um, and you guys probably see her email come out every month, which is fantastic because we got relative, rela- relatively good content on there all the time. That new content. And that's staying very good. And then, so she's doing what, what, to answer your question, Kees. She's doing what she can and what she's been trained to do on the help desk tickets.
Okay.
Um.
Is there a couple different things?
Small percentage of it.
Is there some training that she could do? I mean, at, you know, if, if you thought that that, that would help?
Yep.
And then also, how much of, do you think all these apps are helping the other departments? They're decreasing workload for them, but increasing workload for you?
I don't know that it's decreasing workload for them or not. I, I couldn't tell you that. I think we're getting more information.
Or more efficient, maybe, you know, because efficiency and being able to.
Efficiency certainly. I'm not sure GIS is getting efficiency. Certainly IT, uh, some things like you, you look at the, the. Uh, no wait inside system that we installed. Um, I think the website certainly helped. Uh, the system that we got is much more efficient and easy to update. I know, uh, Danny updates her portion of the website weekly, right? Um, you know, so I think we've helped some departments.
Yeah, being able to do their own.
We've made it, we've made it easier for them to do some things. Um, we've, but you know, IT is one of these. What, IT is one of these things that it doesn't shrink over time. We don't use less technology. Uh, I mean, if you think we're gonna use less technology.
No, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with that.
You know what I told you in the past, the sucking black hole of money is what it is.
It is, it is.
But I, but I, I love you guys. I really do.
I get it. And, and we're just, we're trying to make the black hole as small as possible, but.
I know.
You know, so we, we all rely.
What do some of the others, I mean, you told me that so, you know, Jasper, maybe it wasn't Jasper, you said Warren has five or Jasper. Wha- are they contracting some help? Are they, these are, I mean?
Yeah, all of them do, yeah. And we, we contract, like I said, I've got like fifteen K in there for contract work. Um, which is, is really just the times when we need some really, like, I need, I need the brain surgeon to come in here and. And come in, do the job and, and get out. I don't need the, uh, the general practitioner to come in and, and give me a Band-Aid and, and. And kiss my boo-boo and say goodbye. I, I need the, I need the brain surgeon to come in and fix my, my problem that I can't fix. So that's what that's there for. Um, it's, it's this very specialized. Person. Um, we use that Power BI stuff for that.
Do you?
Yeah, so, um, I don't know how to program it in Power BI, you know, so I hired a, a programmer.
Sure.
You know, so, um, there are things we can do and we, we do a great job of taking care of the, the day-to-day needs, the projects, I mean. You know, we have, we keep adding so many projects that we gotta, we have to keep supporting. Uh, every year and those are, those are projects, once we start it, we never stop. For example, we're doing the, the uh, multi-factor authentication because it's required by several different things now for us.
How far out are you on your tickets?
Uh, we, most of the minor stuff were one to two days.
Okay.
Um, but we have tickets that might take a month to finish, you know, if it's a, a big.
Right.
Something we don't have fix or something we gotta research or, or whatever. So, um, right now there's. Oh, I guess I printed this off yesterday. There was twelve open tickets. But, you know, we, we rotate through, um.
So what about, Andrew, what about the AS four hundred? Where are we at with that? We've added, I think, was it several years ago, we added some capacity?
The AS four hundred is just, it's on, it's in the rotation. So I, I go five, it's either five or six years on that one.
Okay.
Cause it's a pretty spendy.
Yep.
Box. Um, so I try to give about five or six years out of it. What happens after that time is IBM's support just starts skyrocketing on it. And so then you kinda have to just replace it.
Right.
Cause each year that it, it doubles basically your support cost does.
So are there any, uh, anything we need to be thinking about in terms of longevity of that type of a system?
Um, it's, it's still made, it's still supported. Um, the, the company that we use, um, did get sold. To, so Solutions got sold to, um. Maybe Jake could tell me if he's on or Danny's email that got sold to. Anyway, it got sold to a, a large company. Um, I think. I think some of the folks that, the main users of the system, which would be the otters, office recorder, treasurer, assessor. Um, I think the general consensus was that was a positive thing because, you know, Solutions was a relatively small company.
Right.
I mean, you know, forty employees probably. Um, this is a, a, a national company that bought it. So I think the general consensus was, oh, this is kind of a, possibly a good thing. Maybe they'll advance the product into. You know, into a little bit more modern technology. I don't, I don't know how long that will take or if that will even happen or not. It, it's, you know, to be determined. The other thing that scares me just a little bit about that is, um, our cost for s- for solution software. Is about half the cost of the competitor, which is Tyler Technologies. So there's basically in Iowa, there's two main pieces of software that you can use to do county government. Tyler Technologies and Solutions in Iowa. Uh, unless we've put millions of dollars into it and programmed our own.
Sure, sure.
Uh, so you're either buying one of those two pieces of software. One is a, is a Microsoft, is a SQL-based product. One is a built-on AS four hundred. Um. I think our, our electives that use this product right now, um, are, are, they're just really used to it and they, they know how to run it and they know how to operate it. And so. They just, they, there's not really a desire to change on that. Um, so, and, and I'm not gonna push them if they don't wanna change.
I just kinda, I just wanna know what our risk is. Because if we've got the cheaper version of what you could buy. But they got sold, Solutions did, which was our support entity, correct?
Correct.
Then what's, what's that going to mean three years from now? Um, and what's a conversion look like if we needed to do it? From a cost.
So from a risk standpoint, there have been companies that have switched from one to the, to the other. So they. Tyler knows how to, and Jake and I have had this conversation several times. What happens, this was before they got bought. What happens if the owner of the company dies?
Yeah.
Like, what do we do? You know, the good news is there's been some counties that have switched. So Tyler knows how to do it. They've done it before. It's not, it's not a painless process. It's, it's, it's a very time-consuming, painful process, but it, it can be done. AS four hundred are still being built today. I can still go out and buy a brand-new one. I can also buy a hosted service that, that is AS four hundred hosted in a data center. So, um, that's a good thing. I also, you know, we've talked a little bit about DR stuff in the past. Um, I keep our last AS four hundred out here in the, in the server room, out here. So. If for, and, and it's capable of running what we have, it's, it would be slower, but it could run it. So if we had to restore from a backup, in case of an emergency or disaster, we could fire up that old one, turn it on. Copy our data on here, turn, and within a day or two be back up and running on. So, um, from a risk standpoint, relatively low.
Okay, good.
From the, from the company standpoint. It's, it's something we're gonna need to kind of watch over the next few years, just to see what they do.
Right, okay, good.
Yeah, keep us.
Good, I appreciate that. Good. Any other questions for Andrew?
I don't have any.
Steve?
No, I don't have any.
Did you guys wanna look at the GIS question? Really, the only change in that one is, um.
You guys, I, I looked at it.
Yeah, it's just, it's mostly salary. I think there's like a, a couple thousand for a, an extra GIS license.
Yep, yep. Pretty self-explanatory. Alright. If there's nothing else?
No, do you have anything, Andrew? Anything else?
I don't think so.
Um, very good. Andrew, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate it.
And again, thank you for the spreadsheet.
Yeah, how hard would it be to take like these documents and put them up there? Like when we were to do.
Well, the spreadsheet, Jake can make the spreadsheets. He made that for, I mean, he export that.
So that we, like, we could, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll talk about dashboards and stuff like that. That, that's, I, I. To make. Both a current state, so where we know where our fund balances are, those types of things. But for, uh, public presentation, to do it in a dashboard format, I think would be so much better. So, definitely something.
Yeah, very happy with the website. It's been.
Yeah, it's been, it's been going gangbusters. I mean, that, did you, I don't know if you guys, I was talking to Mark about it, but if you saw, haven't seen the. Who's in jail.
Yeah, I've seen it. Yeah, I, yeah, I was looking.
By far the number one in, as soon as we put that on there.
Is, is that something that we created ours? I mean, is that as a common thing throughout the state or is that something that you guys, Neapolitan Labs?
No, we, we did it. Um, there have been, so Shieldware is, is a large piece of software that. It's old and like forty counties use it. There have been like eight counties that have already called me and said, I don't know that. Tell me how you did that. So, you know, I'll send them to the folks that built it for us and. There you go. But it was, it was probably two and a half, three months worth of work, just to do that. Just for, for me, I did most of the management of it. So.
Right. Good. Again, thank you, Andrew. Alright, we got, uh, we're open until lunch. So is there anything you two wanna talk about before? We don't have anything again until one o'clock when we have Karen.
Where are we at in the, we, we've kinda discussed the health insurance renewal. Um. Do we have any other information that, is that something that we'll talk with, you know, in regards to HR? Are we just going to talk about that ourselves? Meaning like, we know that what it's gonna cost us, but is that, is that something that we're gonna wait and talk about on Friday? Or are we?
We can talk about it at any time we have an open period. So if that's something you'd like to talk about now, we can, or we can wait until Friday, or anytime in between. That's what these open areas are for.
I think Friday, I mean, I think we need to probably get something scheduled on when we're gonna kind of tackle some of it because I think Friday seems like it could. Take up majority of all the day with let's. Schedule, let's.
We have three open slots Friday.
Do we? Okay.
Do you have any questions on the health insurance renewal? You got your binders and we got our presentation.
We just haven't figured out how. We haven't talked about any tweaking options.
Well, in, in the buy, in the binder, there are options for changes. I am talking to the gravy group, or whatever they're called, uh, to do a little more due diligence on that. But. From a structure standpoint, when we go through this, and there will be a time probably tomorrow or the next day when we'll go through it pretty. Significant detail because there's some things I wanna ask Jake about. Comes down to cost.
Yep.
I mean, that's self-evident. It's two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And that's all in, that's, that's employer and employee. So. How do we want to, I mean, if you, if you stay with the plan we have, that's what it's going to be. That's the rate increase. That's all factored in. So your other, your options are, as the binder talks about, taking Wellmark. And restructuring Wellmark to absorb some of that cost in different ways. And that's through increasing the cost of the PTO plan. Um. Which is our, most people are on that plan. It's taking potentially some of our dental account money and using that to supplement that, to absorb some of that cost. Because we probably have, I don't know what the exact number is right now. Please, do you know what we have in the dental account?
I think it was, um, just over a hundred thousand.
Right. Change in the dental insurance program is on the table. Maybe cutting that in half in terms of the county contribution, using some of those.
Hey, Mark, this is Jake.
Hey, Jake.
Hey. You asking for the balance in the dental account?
Yeah, yeah, you know, I'm just kinda talking. Right now, but if you, if you know, if you know.
Yeah, Danny printed out, there's a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
Perfect, thank you.
So the question, I'm not sure about the structuring and all that. That is a separate account that was set aside and pulled. For premiums from county and employee for dental purposes. So.
Yeah.
Not sure, no, access to that dollars versus maybe shifting rates or something like that, that, if that's what you're thinking. But this was specifically pulled for that. If that makes any difference in, in structure or how that works.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's number one, can we use that, those dollars like so many other of these segmented accounts for anything else? So. If we have, if, if we want to reduce the amount of the rate increase, let's just take it across the board. Both to the county and to the employee. Are there dollars that we have in these accounts that we can use to absorb some of that cost? That's question number one. Question number two is, do we take a program like our dental program? Reduce the county contribution to the dental program, apply it to the health insurance program? So, so again, again, trying to maintain to the best we can, the insurance benefits we got. Um, the, the gravy program, so, I'm just gonna tell you, I'm talking, I haven't, we haven't set that call up yet. But I'm really not all that excited about it. Okay? Yes, the rate was dramatically different. It's half. If we kept same same in terms of, uh, coverage, benefits, et cetera, the gravy proposal was half of Wellmark as it currently stands. Right? But you've got a company or a program that's five years old, private equity owned. Yes, they've got some history, but that makes me nervous. Uh, Wellmark is eighty-five percent of the Iowa market. Everybody is used to Wellmark. I.
Right.
I don't like disrupting that for, for staff.
I, I think staff would be, yeah, would prefer Wellmark.
So you get the option really of saying, do you just take the cost and find different ways of, of mitigating that cost? Through the dental, you know, money in the dental program, et cetera, changing the dental program? Cause if I had to pick of the insurance that we use, we utilize our health insurance program, that's, that's core benefit number one. Dental is supplementary to that.
Are we self-funded in the dental?
Yes. So anyway, can, high level, those are the, those are the dis- discussion points. And the dollars around that, and can we take some of that dental money, Jake, and utilize that to mitigate?
Yeah, could it be, um, way back in the day or whatever, but the rates are like a recommended rate or something like that? So knowing you have that fund balance and knowing there's quite, quite limits on the dental. Cost of the actual procedures and stuff like that. Is it something that you would maybe just? Um, but what I hear, what I think I'm hearing or un- understanding is to help offset some of the increase in the help. Just raise or lower the premiums, knowing that you're gonna tap into some of that reserve for the dental to help offset that on that. Is that, is that kind of what I'm hearing, what I'm trying to understand?
That's exactly what you're hearing. Yeah.
Okay, cause not actually using the cash balance from that, but letting it affect what you do with the premium rate to the county and employee for the dental. To shift that over.
We're storing.
So it's not an increase in bold.
Right, we're storing up a balance in the dental program.
Yeah, okay. I, I get it. I understand it now.
Yeah. So let's use those dollars, just like fun too, where we've got a reserve, do we need to hold those, those dollars?
Yeah, we're not decreasing.
Yeah, way back, way, way back in the day, when health insurance premiums for employees didn't get raised for several years when we were fully insured. You know, they, they didn't do the recommended rate or whatever, a long time ago. That, that catches up too, so, um, that, that's not, that's not what we're saying here, so.
We're not decreasing the dental coverage.
Well, do we have that? Do we have all the information on that? Do we have that? Do we have all the information on that?
Everything's in here. Yeah.
No, but I mean, we don't have that that information. Do we have that? Is that what we had given to us a long time ago? Is this new? Because we have this, the benefits planning.
That was the board meeting I can print off.
Yeah, we don't have.
Yeah, we don't have that. So if we could get that, that would be helpful.
The other question can I ask Jake too is what what's the balance in that that ACA account? That we have like thirty thousand?
Are you Lisa, you're talking about the the flex benefit one or the one that it's from the several years ago?
No, from several years ago.
Oh, um, it's it's right at thirty thousand. I don't know the exact change, but it's right around the thirty thousand dollars, yes.
And then is there any money, is there a high balance in the flexible spending account?
Uh, let me let me jump on here a minute. I I don't know. Generally, generally not. Um, keep that on there. So you asked Lisa, you're asking about the um the flex one?
Yeah, I don't know the last time I updated the um deductions.
Follow up Danny.
And just an idea of.
Yeah, no, you're pretty current, you're pretty current Danny through uh into G. So it looks like there's a balance of sixteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay. Okay, terrible zone. We were just trying to find uh some alternative ideas.
And that that ACA money actually sits in the health insurance bank account, you might say.
We just don't.
It's just separate.
Okay, okay. And obviously we wouldn't want to use all of the dental, but we would want to keep efficient. You know, cuz obviously the usage does fluctuate. So we were looking at even some of that, we wouldn't take all of that, obviously, cuz we're self funded, so.
Yeah, they could probably project out.
And that's weekly, you know, the it actually depends on the weekly, so you pretty well know where you're gonna be. Right, right, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Lisa. Yeah, if we cut the county contribution in half, it'd go down to fifty-five thousand. That'd be what the county would contribute to dental.
Fifty-five?
Right now, we contribute a little more than that, maybe contribute a hundred thousand to dental.
And then if you, sorry, thank you.
That's right.
This is just a quick estimate, but if you even if you took. We we want to look at the numbers, obviously, but even if you, so I'm just thinking if we took seventy out of dental. And use the ACA money, that would get you a hundred thousand.
Right.
But I want to make sure that would be enough. Cut cash to keep in the dental account because we are self funded.
Right, right, no, that's good, that's a good point.
So if you have a hundred thousand there and you say you cut the dental, you'd have fifty-five?
Right. You cut it in half, yeah. But it'd be a way to use dollars. I mean, yeah, but you cut the count, you raise the cost to the employee for the dental plan. But you use those dollars to mitigate the health insurance increase, which is the far greater increase.
Right, right.
To both county and employee. And with our trend, which is what Sarah talked about in the in the board meeting, our trend is we're we're going, we're going on a severity curve higher.
And we're we're still on that upward balance too.
Yeah.
So.
So and if we want to maintain a relationship with Wellmark, which is the carrier every, I mean. It's larger, more assets under management, there's consistency there. Yeah, we're gonna have to make some trade offs. Anyway, it could be you take the PPO plan and you raise the cost of PPO plan or raise the deductible. Those are other options on the PPO side. To mitigate that. So so all things to think about.
Yep, if you guys, yeah, Renee, if you're willing, if you have you guys, I don't know if they sent you a PDF or whatever.
Copy of that.
Yep.
I thought we made copies of that. So what else do you want to talk about? Lisa, what would be good? So to to firm up the health insurance discussion?
Yep.
Take those proposals, the ones that are in that, and just summarize them on one slide. Yeah. Okay, so there's the dental option. There's the Wellmark number two option, and then there's the current Wellmark. And even throw the gravy one up there too. But again, I'm not that interested in that.
So you said the dental, the Wellmark number two?
Yeah, where she's raising the.
Oh, that's right, I forgot about that, yeah, and then the current, how we currently have.
Exactly, so just put those on a.
One slider?
Slide and you can like I said, even throw the gravy one in there too.
Yeah, okay.
Just so we have that.
Okay.
And then what the aggregate cost for employee, cost for county.
Yep, yep.
Do that, summarize that in one.
I can do that.
That way we're not flipping around to a bunch of different pages all the time. Did we get the gravy meeting set up to call?
Yes, Thursday morning at ten ten thirty.
We'll do it, but. I'm not, I'm just not not that excited about it. So I've been in private equity, I know what that is. All right, anything else we want to talk about? We'll get that set up and get a summary slide put together that'll help with that discussion.
And then projections, we're looking at like what we talked about on Monday, I should say sustainability. We're we're gonna talk about that at some point, what we're looking at overall, whether it's when dealing with healthcare. If we do, you know, um, a four, a five, a six, whatever it may be, and increase, but you know, even a three. I mean, you know, when we're looking at what we have overall for, um, you know, what it's gonna impact.
What are you asking?
Are we going to have?
Understand what that means.
The sustainability, are we looking at charts? Are we looking at the the macro side of it and saying what we're, you know, when are we planning on talking about that?
What are you talking about salary?
Yes, yes, the impact, yes, the impacts of, you know, we look at this amount of dollars and we're increasing. And you know, the sustainability, we talked about that yesterday, but then also the the, you know, how much that's going to eat into the general fund and, um, you know, just our reserves.
It's gonna boil down to what we want to.
How much we're gonna spend, yeah.
What our fund balance, we want to maintain our fund balance there. In the long term.
Yeah, I guess what I mean, there's a couple of components to that, Keisha, that I think we gotta get clear in our heads here. Sustainability, okay? Any of you know what the property tax collections will be over the next five years?
They don't know, I know that.
Okay, anybody have anybody anybody have a trend rate for property taxes for the next five years? That they would like to use as a proxy for sustainability?
Okay, but we can look at projections in which it's going to.
I'm telling you what projections are. So what would you like to use as your property tax collection rate for projections? And you can't just put you can't just pull a projection out of a hat. You gotta use what what is that reasonable number over over time to say this is what will happen to the fund balance? What what is that number?
Well, we can look, I mean, we can look at what we currently have. I mean, I do think that, you know, we can look at the past. But I do think we have to look at that as what is potentially what is gonna be coming out of the the general fund? What what do we have in reserve? Because we don't know, cuz it could it could.
You do, yeah, that's what your cash flow analysis tells you. So I guess I I need to know what you're asking. Jake's already done the cash flow analysis for the current budget. Based on everybody's estimates for raises, salary, et cetera. So that's already in the cash flow analysis.
Right.
For this year, tells you what your ending fund balance will be. Okay? So if you want to go out into the future years. One way to look at it is to say.
I think that's the question to that.
Well, I I think that is, and I'm asking, what would you like to project?
It's a valid question, but I don't know how to get there.
Yeah. You could go back and look and back test it. But you're really taking a guess unless you got time to do it.
But we know that, I mean, potential growth of the three hundred thousand. That would be what we have for this, I mean, coming year. Okay, we can look at that and we know what our insurance cost is. We also know what we're looking at for um what salaries. So the increase in in projection of salaries, um, and what everybody has budgeted.
I think the insurance costs have pretty much aided up that growth.
Well, it's.
I don't know.
You had three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Jake, what was our, and I'll use this term loosely, our new money based on property taxes, three sixty-three?
The the this year or?
This year, for this year.
It was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That would that would be both for the general fund and the general supplemental fund, and that's strictly cash. Cuz it it dropped a little bit down because, you know, when the cities made the tip money around and things like that, so. Quarter of a million dollars, that would be for both general fund and general sub, cuz it's a county wide value it.
Okay, so with this.
Just a second, it's two hundred and fifty for um. The general fund, is that is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking.
So we got thirty-four thousand dollars in that dollar.
But then we also talked about when looking at the cash flow. And if Kim gets what she's projecting, if she were to get that, it's kind of inflated at this point.
No, it's including that estimate, so the estimate is encompassing that she gets all that.
Right.
Yeah.
So do we need to look at that in the aspect if she doesn't?
Then what would you do?
We need to be mindful of looking at uh what we're.
But what would what would be the result of that? If she doesn't get that, then she doesn't have any of those contracts. Then her cost goes dramatically down. It doesn't change any other allocation to any other department. It just means that she didn't get those, so your budget number's gonna come down for public health.
Right, but it's also in the overall balance, the increase of cash.
Sure, it's gonna it's gonna make that make that one million be different.
Yeah. All things we have to think about.
Yeah. All right, anything else we want to talk about? Otherwise, we got a couple hours for lunch. Until the reporter comes in at one o'clock.
One o'clock.
All right. Entertained a motion to Jake, should we uh should we uh not adjourn, we should recess? Oh, I can't hear you Jake.
Yeah, sorry, uh, if you don't mind like recess until one o'clock?
Perfect, is there?
That way it's still under the agenda of the same meeting.
Got it, is there a motion?
And then we have agenda out for tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes.
I believe.
Yeah.
So we need to sort of see, do you guys have anything that we need to give out for Thursday or what?
Do we have anybody listening for Thursday?
Looking at the afternoon, there's a.
Three of them.
Just afternoon.
Starting at two, do you want to do anything before that?
So why don't we?
You guys, when it start on or?
Why don't we do the morning and why don't we settle, why don't we settle what?
Your call with gravy is at ten thirty on Thursday morning.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, it's all right, it's good. So how about tomorrow afternoon, we settle health insurance? You won't be here. How about?
Well, we have the agenda set, I mean, I have an agenda, we have agenda out the session.
No, I'm just trying to in my head, figure out when we're gonna settle some of these issues.
Oh, sorry.
Some of these issues, so we got.
Early Thursday morning, you three until ten thirty.
I'll tell you what, how about let's 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 bag that gravy call?
Okay, okay, okay.
Cuz I don't I I don't care about it.
Okay.
I'm not interested in that.
Then your Thursday morning is up until seven.
So Thursday morning Jake will settle things like health insurance, talk comp board. Raises, those issues, so we'll still meet Thursday morning. Can you get that slide put together for health insurance?
Can we do nine o'clock on Thursday for nine?
Yeah, yeah, nine o'clock be fine.
Nine o'clock Thursday, Jake? Yes, I can.
Perfect, that'd be great.
What what time do we have to, is the, we have a lunch and then?
Yeah, it's open until two, so we've got nine to two before McCale's here.
This is heavily lifting folks.
Yep, and then we want to talk loss probably then too Jake. Let's talk our allocations, get that all squared away on Thursday morning. Because Friday's going to be, eh eh, number one, everybody, well, I'll speak for myself, will be punchy by then. And we've got EMA, Open, Sheriff, that'll be a uh an hour long discussion at least. And then Carla, and then we're done. So let's think that Thursday morning, that open period, we we nail, we take out some of these issues we've got up here on the board. Like uh lost fund, how we allocate that, let's get those things settled. Okay? And we'll talk health insurance then too.
Yes, that's perfect, thank you.
Perfect, good. Anything else right now? All right. Is there a motion to recess?
I move recess until one PM.
I'll second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Remy?
Hi.
Johnor?
Hi.
Thank you. Let me know when you're off here. Perfect.
It's good refresher, yeah.
I'll just remember it.
Good, are we set? Renee, are we set? All right, very good, it is one oh one and we are back. Is there a motion to come out of recess and back into session?
I move we come out of recess and back into session.
I'll second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Remy?
Hi.
Johnor?
Hi.
Very good, we're back. The recorder's office as we continue budget uh for this year, so Karen? You find your page first, don't start till I find your page. I should have your like, oh Chris, I should have your number memorized by now. You're seven, I got it, all right. Uh, highlights Karen, what what do you what do you have in here? What from salary, staffing, expenses?
Really the only thing um that is much of a change. On page one, you will see I did bump up the copier supplies by five hundred dollars. Basically, the reason for that is the the cost for copier paper has doubled. And, you know, they warned us it was gonna happen. It kind of creeped up there, but yeah, it's twice what we used to pay. So we're trying to be as conservative as we can with the paper. But and I try to buy the cheapest that I can get that works in our copier. We did try some recently and it's a good brand, but it does not work in our copy machine.
Really?
Hopefully, we don't buy the case of it, so we'll get through it, but. It works in the printers, it just does not like our copier for some reason. So that's kind of what we've gone through over the years.
Maybe the copier has the, you know, they want you to only use their paper.
Yeah, and actually, it's it's a Quill brand paper and it's the cheapest we can get. And it likes it the most. So I'm glad that it's the cheapest and that's the one it likes, but that's the reason for that increase. And that's really, I think, the only increase um other than things that I can't, you know, control, like insurance.
Sure.
Ivers and things like that. There is on our revenue, we've had a big bump in revenue and that is on page two of revenue. It's the second one down. Last year and for the last couple of years, our budget has been six thousand dollars for receiving copy money from companies.
Right.
And we bumped it up to sixteen thousand, from six thousand to sixteen thousand. The reason for that is there are companies out there that want to have a copy of our documents on a monthly basis. So we do um kind of like you would put it on a flash drive and they get it that way. We have four subscriptions and they pay um very highly for those. They pay three hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Wonder what they do with that?
Um, they're building title plants, just like Marion County Title has a title plant. We had another title plant in Hella for many years, but they did close. But that's that's what it is, they they're just building title plants. And according to the law, we have, if they ask for it, we have to give it to them, so. We are, but we're also getting some revenue off.
Yeah, we could be reimbursed for it.
Yes, we're definitely being reimbursed for it. So yeah, the only thing that really is an increase is salaries. And um what I did was I went with four percent. Thought that was a good, good place to go. I feel like my staff really um deserves that. They've been through a lot in the last year with my health. And they've really had to all step up and go above and beyond what they normally would do.
Okay. And you got the deputy at fourteen, four seven?
Uh, deputy, I put at um eighty-five percent.
Yeah, to get it up to eighty-five, is that where you come up with that?
Reflective of the compensation board recommendation, correct?
Yes, yes, and that's, you know, all I really have to go by. So depending on what you decide for the compensation board, those numbers could be adjusted. But I have to start somewhere.
Yep.
And give you an idea of what I'm spending.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
On uh your revenue, general basic fund, um the budget of a, is that a hundred and thirty thousand?
Which page are you on?
Um, I'm on page one. And received year to date, is that correct? Fourteen. And because the years prior, it's. Does it come in at all at once type of thing?
Maybe Slaney's receipts since then.
Yes.
Because this was printed.
Okay.
Like in December.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wondered if you got them in a one lump sum type of thing, so I just didn't know, I just saw that it was only fourteen thousand, where in the previous, you know, it's been.
Yes.
You know, it varies, so, and then, how do you feel like in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one? You know, recording, that line, you know, went up significantly, what you received. So you felt like, I know we kinda talked about that last year.
Yes.
How do you see it this year? How do you guys see it? Is it is it leveled off or is it?
I think we're still ahead of the the scale for this year. I'm assuming it will end up that way, you know, it's hard to, you just never know. It's very much driven by um what the banks charge for interest, whether people are refinancing. Every time they refinance, that we have more documents. But we are seeing more deeds come through, so I think we're looking good on that, in that area, so far. And it's, you know, that's one of those things, it's hard to say what's gonna happen a year and a half from now. As we project out so far.
Do you, on your general supplement, um you know, in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one? You know, those numbers were, you were off just a little bit. Do you feel like what you have in there now is suffice for, um, cause I see that overall your increase was eight point nine nine? And regarding, I'm assuming that's coming in as maybe insurance, let's see, I don't know. What would be the difference here?
Jake, you know what those numbers were?
So you're talking about them?
Yeah, just heard.
So if you look at the bottom of page two and then uh it goes to page three, so it's.
You in- you increased the health insurance ten, so that's that's, you know, it's just, it must be just the difference in the FICA and the Ipers, okay? I don't have any other questions.
You know, using the numbers by the comp board, that kind of pushes everything also, you know, my salary, deputy's salary.
I was just making sure that there was enough in there, you know what I mean? Just making sure.
Um, there, we should have a good cushion um for the next budget year. Because um I will announce it to you, I'm retiring. I'm gonna take early retirement, um my projected date is April first. No fooling.
Congratulations, good for you.
But yes, I, originally, my plan was to finish out the year. As my term, but with the health issues that I'm dealing with.
Okay.
It's time, it's time, and it's time for me to turn the reins over to the younger people. They are amazing and I know that they can do what they need to do. I know they can take the office and run with it. And so I'm, I feel really good about that, and if I didn't, I wouldn't be able to stay, I'm retiring.
You know you get busier when you retire.
I think so, because I never seen my husband, I used to see him when he worked. And now I have to make an appointment. You people, people see him almost as much as I do.
Congratulations, congratulations.
And your team, I will say, your team did really, a really good job. Well, you were had to be off, so, yeah.
They did, and and I'm always available and will be available for them. All I have to do is call.
That's right, yep. That's that's wonderful for you.
Weird things come up all the time that, you know, you've only done once in twenty years, how did we do that?
Sure.
I'm always there, but.
So the next February, March, what's the transition plan?
Um, well, my plan is to get Naomi on top of everything. She's already on top of ninety percent. There are some some things with month-end reports that I've just always done. I've always felt that it was my responsibility, I needed to do that. I did have an employee years ago helping, and then she retired, so then I just went back to it all again. And it's time, it's time to pass those things on, but Naomi does amazing and she. I had no worries the whole time I was off and, you know, it was not a planned uh medical leave for me. I should have seen it coming, but I didn't. I can see now how bad I was, knowing how I feel now, but.
Right, I get that.
Well, that's, yeah, well, I appreciate that, Karen, and I know you, uh Naomi will do a good job, holding the fort down.
She will.
It is an electric office, so. I assume Naomi, this is something you're interested in.
Uh, very much so, yes, yes, I will be running.
They can't hear you, hang on.
Naomi will be running for recorder.
Karen will translate.
I will translate, and um my hope is that the board will appoint her to fulfill the rest of my term. Because she is the best candidate and has my full support as running for reporter.
Very good, well, we'll work on that as a board, Jake, for that process, uh as we get closer to April.
Yeah.
Do we have to have that process in place before the retirement then, I'm assuming?
There is a process that hasn't been used in Marion County for quite some time.
About to dust that one off.
There has been a lot of turnover around the state, so there's been kind of a topic of discussion with a lot of office holders leaving office in return. I don't wanna talk, hate to talk about it when you just announce it, but there is a process to go through for the board, so they'll, a public, we'll have to. Have to see what it is, if there's a public announcement and or determine. If you would in intend to uh proceed by appointment or a special election. And uh have a notice and that type of thing, so. We'll have to start looking at that.
I think the intent would be, Jake, we proceed by appointment, since we're coming up on a. Election, there would be no reason to have a special one then.
Not call you more work in that aspect either, you know.
More money for Jamie, support all of that.
Alright, well, you dust that off, Jake, and have us ready to go by April one and.
Yeah, I think.
That'd be good.
We'll have to have those before that, so.
Alright, perfect.
Glad I came out today.
I was gonna tell you in the hall and you said you were going. I was gonna say, I have a secret.
We have a, we have an H R question, Lisa?
Yes. I would just request that we, uh if Karen could put something in writing for us. Uh, to present to the board, and then that way we have that in writing, and then we could go forth from there.
We have a meeting on Tuesday, do we not, Jake?
Next week, Tuesday.
Maybe by Tuesday, Karen, has something that we can, and also to recognize you uh for your service to Marion County. How many years?
Up, down, up, down, you get your exercise at least.
Yes, um I've been with the county twenty-seven years. This'll be my twentieth year as the reporter.
That's excellent.
Really? I didn't realize it's been that long.
Well, we appreciate your service uh to the county, to our residents.
Thank you, I have enjoyed ninety-nine point nine percent of it. I think, um, I, yeah, I never in a million years would have thought about retiring. But I think it's time for me, and I feel good about it, so.
Good.
They always say you'll know when you're ready, and I wasn't ready, but I think now I am, so.
Excellent, well, again, thank you, Karen, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And Naomi? You'll have your work cut out for you.
Yep. I welcome it. She does, and that's why I brought her with me today, I wanted her to see what the budget hearing was like before she has to jump in a new one herself. And also the meeting, the board meeting, um she commented, this room looks way smaller in person than it does when you're on Zoom.
Excellent.
It felt good.
Congratulations, Karen, thank you.
Questions for Karen on the budget?
I'm glad your percentage was higher than mine on the enjoyment part of it.
Steve's at ninety-nine point eight.
Ninety-nine point eight?
Yes, yes, I think that's what he was hinting. I'll just fill in that blank. Very good, no other questions, Karen, thank you. Very much, and well, again, we'll be looking at everything, and if we have more, we'll come back and ask him.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
And are there other meetings scheduled, or you'll, we'll just hear about that later?
If we need it, if we need it, we're gonna try to wrap things up by Friday.
Yeah, you kinda indicated that maybe there would be a meeting on Friday.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see.
Or or just an email.
Yeah.
Letting us know.
Yep. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, and congratulations again, Karen.
Thanks. They keep telling me I have a spring in my step, and I think maybe that's what it is.
You you say it's not the new shoes, it's just, you know, it's retirement, I see it, I see it new in my future.
Again, thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, it's up to you. We're gonna talk about really exciting stuff now, actually it is, Mr. Grandia.
We are?
We are.
We were about to adjourn.
Oh, no, oh, no, Jake. Couple things that we should, we should talk about, again, Thursday will, Thursday morning, we'll try to wrap, put a. Yeah, we'll put a bow around some of these issues, health insurance, we'll probably talk more comp board raises. Fund two, or anything we want to do from a reserve standpoint, yes, Karen?
I forgot something, can I, can I jump back in here?
And you're gonna interrupt my flow of thought?
I'm sorry.
Well, I suppose you're retiring, I'll let you, I'll let you go, alright, go ahead.
Um, so, one of the things I wanted to talk about, now I should have wrote it down, cause you know, apparently retirement's. One of the things I would like to do is to post a position as soon as possible for the reporter's office. Not just because I'm leaving, that's part of it, uh but also because Jamie is going to be going on maternity leave.
Okay.
And that's gonna leave a big hole, um she pretty much heads up our vital records department. Which Naomi is learning the vital records and will be able to slip into that position, but we're still gonna need another person there to fill out. So if the board would allow us to post a position. It will be the regular position, it will be a full-time position. And the sooner we can get someone in to get them trained, with two of us pretty much leaving at the same time, that's gonna leave a big hole in our office.
Alright, very good.
So.
As we go through the rest of the budget, we'll look at that cost, uh here's my one question, I'm just gonna be direct. Is this something we can do with temporary help, or do you actually need a true full-time?
We need a true full-time. We do need a true full-time, and we have money in the budget, so it would be okay budget-wise.
Okay.
We would not run out of money before the end of the year.
Alright, very good, very good, thank you, Karen, we'll, we'll.
And tell me again, when is, when is Jamie going to leave? When is she out?
She's.
Ten to, I guess.
Her due date is uh March twenty-seventh.
Okay, alright.
So, we're probably gonna go at the same time.
Okay, alright, no, good, we'll certainly look at that as we finish up, thank you.
Thank you, I really will leave this time.
Are you sure? I'm gonna wait.
She's way too happy.
Thank you. Alright.
Fun two.
Fun two, that's what I was talking about, so, couple things. Just so we can continue our discussion, let's go to the cash flow page. So, we, people have been talking about. Where we'll be, what's in there. What's gonna happen if we, if we would accept the budget as is, all that type of stuff. So I wanna just take you through a couple of thought processes here. Macro framework on where we could end up, particularly as it relates to Kim's projections, public health. So if you look at our proposed F Y twenty-two, twenty-three line, alright, which encompasses everything that Jake has put in and received from departments.
It's plugged one, right, or fun two?
Oh, fun one, fun one first, Steve, we'll go to fun two here in a sec, sorry about that. If you pull out, so let's say uh Kim gets nothing that she's projecting. Alright, remember your revenue and your expenses go down correspondingly, alright? It's not like it comes out of one side of the ledger, it comes out of both, and you've got about two point three million in fund one for what Kim is talking about. About seven hundred thousand of that is fund two, there's gonna be benefits attached to that. Alright, so keep that split in mind, that also flows over to your fund balance as well. And what I'm trying to say is that, when it says that increased decreased cash balance at a million dollars. That should stay roughly the same. Alright, you're not gonna get, because that also encompasses new money. It encompasses additional revenues or how people that budget, it's not just Kim exclusively in that million. I wanna make sure everybody understands that as we look at those numbers, okay? So it's not like that million dollar increase goes away, now, it might not be a million, it could be something a little less than that. But it's it's still in the black, alright? And we'll get a little more specificity here as we talk uh on Thursday, so I wanna keep that in mind, secondly, go to fund two. And she, I asked Jake to do real high-level cash flow analysis, I mean, this is cash flow. But what's driving that, we've got in the red, two sixty-eight, three forty, on the increased decrease? In order for us to understand what, how much room we have to take down our fund balance. Kinda need to know where that number's coming from, what's driving that number? And is that number recurring? Is it one-off? Will we see it two years from now? Is that, is that negative number something that's going to continue to be popping up? Because if you take your fund balance down, let's say a million dollars, well, then your fund balance will last about eight point six years at that attrition rate. At that burn rate. So this is to give us an idea, is that, is that a consistent burn rate, or will it fluctuate? So this is to give us an idea, is that, is that a consistent burn rate, or will it fluctuate as well um in upcoming years? Alright, so Jake, if you wanna take it away?
Well, this was, um, yeah, I just kinda threw this together, is it okay if I hand you?
Absolutely, yeah, pass them out, yeah.
This'll be beneficial or not?
Just to give everybody a framework as we talk. Thank you.
I think the charge was, the charge was just to try and see if there was something outstanding, showing the um the acceleration or the, you know, the burn down of the, of the Fund Two, that, the red number, because if you can see historically, um we've been flat, we're gaining ground in Fund Two, so, it's alright. So I just ran, um, you have two sheets in front of you, and they're very basic. But I ran from our budget software and converted it over, um, all, everything that's budgeted at Fund Two. So, this is a summary, and then this is the detail of everything out of Fund Two. And it is not all of the Fund Two budget, it didn't matter what department I sorted C Fund Two, and then I sorted it by the object, which is like, the object is if it's like payroll is a one hundred, part-time is one oh one, as you can see, and uh FICA is one eleven, and health insurance is one thirteen, so I sorted those out, and then just basically totaled them to see what those tools were. Um, the other stuff that comes out of here, uh it's like our insurances for tort liability and that, that type of thing. Everything has its normal pre-bid, or its normal flow of up or down on those, but we were looking for something that maybe stood out a little bit more, or was part of it. So, if this is at all um beneficial, go back to the summary, and you can see there's three years worth of actual cost for those, all the chart of account, all the ob- object chart of accounts for FICA, IFRS, and health insurance. Okay, because like Tyler's comes out of Fund Two, um so basically, most of the counties, not emergency management, not accessory, I think, but for the most part, this, everything for FICA, IFRS, and health insurance comes out of Fund Two. So you can see the actuals are quite consistent, from eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty-one for all three. Um, those are actual costs, then the twenty twenty-one budget is in there, um you can see like FICA was up seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, the IFRS eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, and health one point eight million, okay? So that's quite a bit higher than the actual, and you can see that that kinda shows, um there is, you have to have extra room in your budget, I mean, that's just, and we don't usually burn all of our budget. So that, that would be like a, this current year's accepted budget for what's, for those FICA and IFRS. The twenty twenty-two, twenty-three number is the next number, column, and then the difference between the two budgeted numbers. That's what the L is, so FICA is up a hundred and twenty thousand, IFRS is up a hundred and forty thousand, and health is up two forty-four. So that's, that's a pretty healthy jumps, when the whole overall budget is only two sixty-eight, right? So that shows that there's other revenues in there, that some people maybe are, are, it's taxes, you know, different things that are kinda making up that difference. The rest of the expenses late, stayed pretty flat, and then revenue helped offset that, so, and um so that kinda shows, and is that FICA, IFRS reflective of the salaries put in? You know, people have put in whatever salaries, they have three percent, four percent, five percent, or whatever the, the comp board isn't. The comp board is mainly for, you know, the elected folks and their deputies, if they're tied to that. The rest necessarily aren't tied to uh the comp board recommendations. Karen was an example of that, staff was four percent, that didn't flow with the comp board recommendation.
Right.
So, and, and the differences, so that's, that shows quite a bit of difference of, of where that is, and um is there gonna be all a hundred percent of that expended or not? Well, three years of actual show that it isn't a hundred percent expended at budget, so that gives you some confidence that there is room there, that people are budgeting family health, uh family single, that type of thing, and um maybe budgeting a little for overtime, it doesn't happen, those types of things. Then, it's in the budget, but it doesn't get used.
Right.
Also, um on the detail of, on the detail side, um of these sheets, I did just, um, what kinda did jump out was quite a bit of an increase is, again, this ties back to our conversation with the, the public health um department budget, which there's nothing wrong about it, it's just, I think it's having a little effect here too. Because the public health's um IFRS ask is from one twenty-two to two oh eight, so that's sizable difference.
Yeah.
Uh FICA is from ninety-nine thousand to one sixty-nine thousand, okay? And health insurance is from two sixty to three point five. So you take those three, and that has a major effect on just what would, I mean, we normally have an increase, but I think that accelerated, accelerated the difference this time.
Right, right.
Right? If that makes any sense.
No, it, it, it does, because it gives you some, you get the, the last three years of actuals, and whatever that percentage increase is, we settle on for wages, and that filters through to IFRS, healthcare.
Brings that number down, yeah.
Yeah.
Then it, then our burn rate is not as fast as what we, what it looks like.
Right.
On here, because you've got what Kim has projected, you probably have some other, um, some other items in there. Two hundred and sixty-two thousand, that is, just to be clear, for two hundred and sixty-eight thousand is not a great variance anyway. So, when you're looking at a budget or a fund of this scale.
Right.
Especially with all the variables that are in it, but it does give you some confidence that it's not gonna be that at the end of the day. It's gonna be a lot less, if it's not in the black.
Right, if Kim does land all those grants and does incur all that expense, it is coming back.
Sure.
Right, now, historically, that comes back to the general fund, not the general supplemental fund, so.
Right.
Um, helps up the, assists the general fund, actually.
Right, but the, the point of this, though, for the board, and just having Jake walk through it at that level, is to say, there is some, you can have some comfort that there is an ability to take that, that fund balance down. Depends on what that amount would be, but that this isn't gonna get worse, that that two sixty-eight doesn't get worse.
Yeah, this is, I mean, that, that's, this is at a hundred percent decision, what everybody has put in, and for salary levels, what everybody put in now, I mean, if anything is reduced or taken out, that would, that would.
Reduce this.
I don't know how to reduce the red number.
Well, an increase, yeah.
Yeah, it's a budget, it's a budget number.
Require less.
Yeah, just require less of a gap, so.
And so, you know, with the general fund and general supplemental fund, if, if we're fully, if this is going through to, for you guys to think about reducing levy, it's literally five cents levy, it's ninety-three thousand, and it's gonna make it even easier, it's a hundred thousand, that's even easier in your head.
Right.
I don't worry, yeah, sorry. So from a cash, so cash flow, I, I do have these old, some of these old cash flows, uh that had what was budgeted and what was actual, that I can show, I can send it to you as well, so you can see the different tabs.
Well, and I, and I have my, my, uh, my book, my last year's book, I could look at, see what was, yeah, what it ended up being.
I try to.
What you projected versus what you said like the actual.
That would be interesting to see, so I've tried to just build versions, so it'd be different tabs, I'll send it to you, you can see, if it's beneficial, it's beneficial. That be okay?
Yeah.
Oh, that'd be perfect, Jake.
I hope that got the direction that you asked for.
Yeah, it, that's what, it gives everybody a framework to work from, and, and numbers to work with, because that's what we need. It can't just be a guess or a feeling, it's gotta actually have a, a perspective on the actual numbers, and knowing where those numbers come from.
Yeah, and it's really hard for me to, it doesn't sound, you might say, but uh there are so many different, there's, there's tax revenue, there's miscellaneous revenues that go up or down, that people change, they get, you know, they don't get, and then there are the expenses, so it's hard to just say, well, I'm gonna lower five cents, and the fu- projected fund balance will do this, but actually, there's a lot of miscellaneous receipts that are outside of tax dollars.
Right.
That make a difference, and quite a few departments increase their outside miscellaneous receipts, because Marion County's blessed and is busy. So if it's recording of documents, or Michaela in the treasurer's office just kicking it with um registrations, or, you know, cap, the campgrounds, those things, that, that makes a difference too, so we've been blessed with that as well.
In a, in a fund like this, I think, Jake, for me, the basic question is, is there enough cash coming in in any particular budget year to cover the expenses? Because when you're talking FICA, IFRS, health insurance, and then a few other items, I realized we got some salary that comes out of here for, maybe it's Tyler, or whoever comes out, so that we have enough cash coming in to cover those costs. Um, and if the answer is yes, which this looks like yes to me, at least for this year, and it gives you some flexibility to take that reserve down, probably not fifty, fifty cents, but you could go down, you could be a little more aggressive, and then, and then you measure, it's like anything, you wait and you watch and you measure. And you say, you come down maybe ten to fifteen, maybe twenty cents, you see where you're at, and then you make the next course correction the next budget year.
So, like, what, what you just said there, if the, if you're still looking at Fund Two, and the ending fund balance at the end of your, the projected FY twenty-two, twenty-three, with how everybody has put everything in is three million, three point two million.
Right.
And so, if you take off twenty cents, and just roughly did it backwards, that drops, that number will, if I reduce the levy, twenty cents in the budgeting software, that will automatically reduce the tax ask from the people for that equivalency, which will be a direct correlation to the revenue, and will sort of dr- drop that ending fund balance down to two point eight million.
Right.
That's what twenty cents would do, I mean, it's, you guys know.
Yeah, yeah.
It's almost easier to um calculate the taxes based off levy than all the outside revenues.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
A lot of variability there, but that's good.
Jason doesn't know how many people he's gonna house in that, that little city, and those types of things.
And that's why I, I do think it's better to be, that you can be more aggressive, but not go too far down that road yet, until you figure out what that, what that impact is going to be, and then if you wanna take another swing at it the next year, you can, um, and see where those, uh, whether, where those levels fall. So, very helpful, do you have questions for Jake on that?
Appreciate the.
Yeah, thank you, Jake.
It helps.
Any other questions on any other funds or cash balances that we wanna talk about now? If not, uh, we're gonna end early, and then tomorrow we have a full morning.
Basically, the Kim Dorn Show.
It is the Kim Dorn Show, that's right.
Lucky here.
Open in the afternoon again to have more discussion, Thursday, remember, we're gonna try to settle some of our, uh, oh, you, you updated this, thank you. Um, and then, uh, we've got Tyler, we have the Tyler Show, and the Michaela Show, and the Steve Show. So Thursday afternoon's gonna be, gonna be long, and then Friday, uh, EMA, any changes, edits, comments, other things, and the sheriff and Carla in the afternoon, so, and we get close. And if we need an extra day or anything like that, we can always have an extra day, next week, we have a regular session on Tuesday. So we can certainly do any wrap-up things on Tuesday afternoon if we need to.
Yeah, we're still setting okay on timeline, so, um, from the overall, from the overall picture, yours is not in good shape. And if you want, I can put in the notes to, uh, if needed, try and just uh put something on your agenda for your draft um regarding the budget, if you need to have a further discussion on that Tuesday, if you need to as well.
Absolutely, yeah, well, we get, you know, next, next couple days, Jake, we'll be able to.
You don't know.
Yep, next couple days, we'll be able to decide that, so, anything else you wanna talk about this afternoon?
Hmm, I'm good.
Steve?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, very good, Jake, thank you for doing that for me.
Yeah, thank you, Jake.
Uh, we'll have more, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
John?
Aye.
Coles?
Aye.
Brady?
Aye, adjourned.